This conference will now be recorded.
It's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order. Call please.
Commissioner Giger?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Mayor Stoman?
Here. Those who like, we will stand for opening prayer. For Jennings.
To pray with me. Oh God, our help in ages past or hope for years to come, our shelter from the stormy blast, our eternal home. We invite your presence into this room tonight. We seek your wisdom, your guidance. We seek the presence and the manifestation of your love. We ask your covering over this council, over the staff, over the employees, over our entire community, our youth, our seniors. Bless everyone, God. Let us consider the matters before us in respect and regard to the greater constituency of this community. And let us work together in harmony and peace. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions?
There's no additions or deletions, but I did want to clarify on the agenda. The consent agenda for the minutes, it says August 5th. It's actually September 5th, but the minutes within the packet are correct.
I'd like to make, seeing no addition or deletions, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the agenda with that change for the date on the consent agenda regarding the September 5th meetings.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All in favor say aye. Motion carried. Proclamations. National Night Out.
The first proclamation is proclaim October 3rd, 2023, National Night Out in Arcane City. And I think the police department is here.
Proclamation, whereas the National Association of Town Watch annually sponsors National Night Out. It's a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program. And whereas the 39th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Arcane City to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas Arcane City community plays a vital role in assisting Arcane City Police Department to join crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Arcane City in supporting National Night Out 2023 work. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Arcane City be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Arcane City. Whereas police, community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. And now therefore, the mayor does hereby call upon all citizens of the city of Arcane City, Kansas, to join the Arcane City Police Department and National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 39th Annual National Night Out and does hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023 as National Night Out in Arcane City, Kansas. The mayor further calls upon all citizens to consider attending or supporting the annual National Night Out kickoff party to be held from 5:00 to 8:30 p.m. Monday, October 2nd, 2023, at the Hilton Park in Arcane City.
Okay, so the second proclamation is proclaim October 8th through the 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week in Arcane City. And we have members of the fire department.
Opposed the mayor, Arcane City, Kansas, proclamation. Whereas National Fire Protection Association has designated the second full week of October as Fire Prevention Week and whereas homes are the location where people are at the greatest risk of fire injury and death. And whereas the Arcane City Fire and EMS Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires, home fire injuries, carbon monoxide poisoning through education, prevention, and protection. And whereas the city of Arcane City's residents are responsive to public education measures and able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fires, especially in their homes and kitchen. And whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, cooking, safety starts with you. Pay attention to fire prevention. It's the focus on educating the public about simple steps to reduce the risk of fire when cooking at home. Keeping themselves and those around them safe. And whereas according to the NFA, cooking is the leading cause of home fires with nearly half of all home fires involving cooking equipment and injuries. Unattended cooking being a leading cause of home cooking fires and related deaths. Now therefore, the mayor of the city of Arcane City, Kansas, called upon all citizens to observe the week of October 8th through the 14th, 2023 as Fire Prevention Week in Arcane City and urge all citizens to check their homes for fire hazards and take measures to be more aware while cooking during Fire Prevention Week at all times to support the FDA's efforts to build Arcane City Fire Department.
And the third proclamation is proclaim October 2023 as Community Planning Month in Arcane City.
Well, there's change is constant and it affects all cities, towns, counties, township, and rural areas and other places. And whereas community planning and planning can help to manage these changes in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live, and play. And community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be involved medically in making those choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefits of the planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and implement the excellence of planning and plan improvement. And whereas the month of October is designated as the National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas the celebration, excuse me, of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to recognize publicly the participation and dedication of the members of the planning commission and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Arcane City, Kansas. And whereas tonight, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professionals, professional community, and regional planners of the city of Arcane City, Kansas, and to extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public services and these professionals. Now therefore, the mayor of Arcane, the city of Arcane City, Kansas, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Community Planning Month. In the city of Arcane City, in conjunction with the celebration of National Planning Month throughout the United States, urge all citizens to observe this day.
Consent agenda?
I'm making a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Consent agenda is written, I'm sorry.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Your business.
Item number one under City Manager Department is consider the first reading of an ordinance exempting the application of KSA 41-719D to allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor at a designated area of SCK Health during the fall and lawn special event on October 7th, 2023. So I have been working with Jill on this.
And the foundation director is here as well. She planned the event.
Tell you a little bit about what we're doing. So what do you, what did you want to?
Let's tell you about the event.
Okay, so it's our second anniversary for the foundation and so we're having a party on the lawn, out on the lawn of the, of the hospital. And we're going to have, it's going to be something for all ages. We'll have a petting zoo. We'll have a jumping house, face painting. We're going to have a concert that will start at 7 o'clock. It's Makayla Brownlee. She is from, she was one of the American Idol finalists. She's over from Wellington. And she'll play from 7 to 9. And we were wanting to have an area of a big tent, like a pavilion tent, and have a beer garden underneath that. And the proceeds for that will support the 4th of July fireworks that visit Arcane City funds. And so everything that evening is free. The Creekstone is going to serve a thousand hamburgers. So the first thousand people will get a free hamburger, bottle of water, and chips. The concert's free, the face painting's free. Just a big party. We've partnered with the industry, industry partners, Can Pack, Creekstone, Jet Air Works, City of Arcane City, Visit Arc City, and putting it on free, free party for the community to celebrate our two-year anniversary.
She's given Visit Arc City the opportunity to sell beer, pop, and snow cones for a dimension of different amounts depending on what they're purchasing. The fireworks, we raised the money through Visit Arc City and we raised $10,000 every year for that. They are going up to $12,000 next year. He's kept his costs down the last couple of years, but like everything else, things have gone up. So Pam reached out with, to me, and gave me the opportunity to try to raise some money so that we don't have to depend 100% on donations. So we're going to offer beverages for sale out there if people are.
You're talking about, yeah, huge fireworks, raising from 10 to 12,000.
Yes. He's been very reasonable and he's kept the last, it's been 10. And I think for our fireworks show, from what people tell me, for what we pay, we would get a really good show. But with his cost, he's going to have to go up. So I've got to try to find ways to get a little bit more money coming in. Visit Arc City's took care of the loophole between what we raise and what it is the last couple of years. But I'm trying to get where we don't have to take so much out of our budget to make that happen.
That's true.
She invited me to do this. I was hoping that people would be fine with it. I do have the license already approved. It's already been filed with them and I called Frank Owens with the college to see about having a security officer out there. They told me it wasn't required, but I think it's a good idea to try to have somebody to help do that. So I have made a call to try to get him out there to help us make sure that everything's under control.
And you know it was required. It's not required?
I don't know. I don't believe it is.
Beer garden, so?
No, because it is on private property. So our parks are public.
Not in a city building. And there will be one way in, one way out type of thing on this?
It's going to be in a tent, yes. It'll be a contained area.
So if I understand the intent of what was said, the, because, of course, you know, the hospital itself is not a private entity per se. So what we're saying more pointedly is that any related incidents or accidents should there be as a result of the introduction of alcohol would be the liability of the host site. Is that what we're?
Be the same as if we had an event in the park or any other kind of.
So when you're, okay, so when you're, when you're granted a license to serve alcohol, like in our public park, Wilson Park, are you saying that if there is an incident or accident related to the consumption or serving of alcohol, the presence, that the city has the liability exposure or is it the organizer of the event?
I would say the property owner. I'm sure that there's event insurance that the city carries that covers all of that.
Actually, my name's attorney. Anybody involved could.
It's like, you know, we're going to have a jumping house out there and, you know, if somebody gets hurt, the parent can sue the volunteer that's standing there at the door of the jumping house. They can sue the hospital. They can sue every entity that's a sponsor. They can, I mean, they can sue them if they want to for that. But that's why we're going to have to have event insurance.
Okay, yeah, I understand. Anybody can sue anybody for anything.
Right.
It functionally, and the merit of it might be dismissed in, before the magistrate. But I do understand that concept, but, but, but I want to, I want, I guess I want to be certain that the governing body is not opening itself to any exposure by endorsing or the, the serving of alcohol. I'm going to follow that with another, because it is at the hospital and because the hospital is actually on, between the traffic ways back home for most people will be either US 77 or the county road. What is that? 61. Are you going to have any kind of, are you going to ticket them and say two and when your tickets are gone or three? Are you going to limit how much alcohol an individual can consume or I'm, I'm just concerned about someone that might.
Is that something that we've done?
It would be used as a judgment call. That would be the same as what we've done for other events that we have. It's similar to what we would do when we have taco lalo. We have the same. It's a covered area that they can come into and you serve them. And if you feel like they shouldn't be served, you wouldn't serve them.
Okay. I just, thank you.
Chief Er.
I'm sorry.
Are you good with that? No officer? And are you good with that?
You know, I would prefer having an officer present, but they would obviously have to pay for that extra security. But if they're going through the Cali College to have at least representation.
I have emailed Frank and I haven't heard back yet. If I don't hear from him, I would reach out. Because I personally want to have somebody. It's not required, but I think it's a good idea. Just the presence of a security personnel makes people act better and stuff. So I, I am reaching out to someone. I haven't heard back yet because I needed to get this approval before I could move forward to the next step. If I can get someone from the college, which I think that I'll be able to, I can reach out to the police department. I intend to have somebody. That would be my preference.
And for my purposes, I'm not trying to rain on your parade. My, my objective is to make sure that in, at a healthcare facility-related event remains something that's positive in terms of the outcomes rather than to be associated with some, some tragedy entrenched from north of town, back to town, or any other. I do understand there's.
Yeah, more likely more like refreshment type atmosphere than a party type atmosphere, but it's just, but I understand 100% what you're saying.
So Pam, you said they're getting a burger, chips, and what else?
Bottle of water.
Bottle of water. And so you'll be selling pop?
Pop, snow cones, and beer and seltzers.
And one other question. Do you have an age limit for the bouncy house? Or do I just have to take my shoes off to get in? That's the best answer I've heard all time.
We might limit your time then, though.
Thank you.
That being said, I make a motion. We consider the reading of the ordinance exempting the application of KSA 41-719 RCD to allow the sale of consumption of alcohol, liquor at the designated area of SCK Health during the fall on the lawn event on October 7th, 2023.
I'll second that.
And seconded.
Get approved, right? Yeah, okay.
Now, is there any further discussion on it? If not, that's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Giger?
I'm all about the selling of pop. Snow cones. Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
No.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Stoman?
Yes. Motion carries.
I hope you will all come out and join us and get a free hamburger and get in the bouncy house. Thank you.
Be sure you take pictures if he does.
Go put some success on the event.
Item number two is consider a resolution scheduling a public hearing for 5:30 p.m. on November 7th, 2023 in the commission chambers at City Hall to determine if structures located at 820 South 3rd Street, 610 North 5th Street, 126 South 8th Street, 120 South 9th Street, 122 South 9th Street, 1504 South G Street, 514 East Cedar Avenue, and 525 East Cedar Avenue are unsafe and dangerous. And I believe Mike Fellis is here.
Commissioners, I have eight houses, structures to bring before you on November the 7th for the hearing, where you discuss those dangerous structures. And we'll tell you this, that all of them are vacant. They're not, they're not having. Any questions?
Because most landlords, are they living in this area? Or they, I mean, you say they're vacant, but they're out of town.
A lot of the people are out of town that, that own the property, but they're not landlords. Some of them are. There's part of you that do live in the county and within Kelly County, too.
Is the taxes owed on most of those houses or not?
There's a few, quite a few of them that there's behind home taxes.
One, one year or two years?
Yeah, various. I think the shortest one's around two years.
With the, with the recommended date to be, this is September, September. Where the request is for the hearing to be set in November, which is some six weeks out. So regardless of the locus of the property owner, they'll be contacted and have ample time to appear or to contact you in some fashion if there's an intent to remediate or redeem it from this.
Just put it in the paper or anything like that. Yeah, so they are.
And they get correspondence from us? If you have contact information?
I'm saying probably 5% of my correspondence I would give that many.
But they were, they will receive a letter?
It'll be a registered letter, right? They have to sign for it, right?
So after the last publication, so I have to publish two. We have to wait 30 days and then our resolution is certified in the mail to every property owner left on that list. After the, sorry, after the first publication.
Again, I'll, I'll share my rationalization. I have a bit of a mental diaper rash over our encounter with the gentleman on South 1st Street.
1st Street.
Who was insistent that he'd not been communicated with adequately or so we had, had all of these subsequent discussions about, I didn't know that, or I hadn't heard that, or I thought it was okay and all of that. So I just, I'm saying, in follow-up to Commissioner Warren asking about local property owners versus somebody who might be remote, that no one will be at a point when, on November the 7th, where they will say they, or we can say they haven't been contacted.
Tiffany said we'd publicize it twice, then we send it certified later. And that's state regulation that we have to do that. So we do other things that were required to do.
Even on every bit of communication you possibly do to where you're getting, yeah. Yeah. We just. Yeah, you know, our other one kind of turned into about, not that we didn't enjoy you, but about eight appearances from you coming back with, I didn't know that, or I hadn't heard that, or I thought it was okay, that type of thing. And so we've wanted to kind of, you know, for record, say, yeah, these folks will have been contacted. Yeah, and, and, and we'll have documentation of that so that we can not have it protracted in the process.
We give them all notification. We do it according to state statutes and we do it legally.
I would say also that, that the process they follow is actually a little stricter than state statute.
And then after that, after the 90 days, if we don't, if they don't respond back, then the next process is what?
Oh, November the 7th, we'll have the hearing. If you all decide to go ahead and make them change their structures, then we have to wait 30 days after that. And usually I'll wait another 30 days and see if they're required. And at that time, if they're not notified by them, then we go ahead and proceed with Tony's crew, Tony, to start the jet bus.
With that being said, I would offer this motion that we adopt a resolution scheduling a public hearing at 5:30 p.m. on November 7th, 2023. Am I projecting well? In the commission chambers at City Hall to determine if the structures located at 820 South 3rd, 610 North 5th Street, 126 South 8th Street, 120 South 9th Street, 122 South 9th Street, and 1504 South G Street, along with 514 East Cedar and 525 East Cedar avenues are unsafe and dangerous. That is the motion.
I will second that.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I have one thing. On if, if they all don't respond, you know, and we tear them down, do we have enough funding in our funds to do that or?
We have enough to do the majority of them. We might have to do some next year.
Okay, in other words, you have space for that.
And what should I give to that cap?
Yeah, okay.
Discussion?
Oh, well, I just didn't regard it. I'm sorry, just to clarify. Is the, because we're saying November, the process then is if we take an action supportive of the request, then there's a 30-day window and you mentioned that there might at times be an additional 30 days. It actually moves us into another calendar year. So, so when you say if we exhaust the funds, are we talking about 2024 funds? Will this be out of 2023 funds?
Like I said, legally, we have to, I think it's 30 days. After 30 days, we can go ahead and proceed on them. We might try to do maybe a few this year, otherwise on 24, 24.
So that, so that we, yeah, so that we can deplete the funds from this calendar year and then, okay, thank you.
I'd rather turn those funds back over for next year if I can.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Any further discussion?
I trust your judgment, sir.
If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post thing, say. Motion carried.
Did you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Item number three is an ordinance prohibiting the use of tobacco products, including electronic smoking devices in Levy Watson Park in the city of Arcane City.
So this is a part of the grant that the city's been awarded for Levy Watson Park. It's a Healthy Kansas Pathways Initiative grant for $50,000 to do some park improvements at Levy Watson. And one of the requirements is that we have a tobacco-free park there and. And, uh, one of the requirements is, is that we have a tobacco-free park there and so.
I mean, I know when we decided this, this health pathway grant, we knew this would be required as one step. So this isn't a new, a new thing. This is just something that's been, we were aware of when we adopted that, this plan or the Healthy Pathways, or Healthy Kansas Pathways program. So it's nothing new. Did you have something you want to say, Mayor?
Yes. I announced on here you don't have chewing tobacco.
Well, it's all tobacco, I believe.
It says, yeah.
Use of tobacco products, so it would cover anything tobacco.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. Get that in there.
Thank you. And, and I think the other thing is important, there isn't really any, there's no penalty, no one's going to get arrested or ticketed, but it's more of a, um, they will, if, if they're caught using tobacco in those parks, they will be educated as to the, to the, uh, ordinance and, uh, asked to quit using tobacco products or leave the park.
Well, that being said, I'd like to adopt an ordinance prohibiting the use of tobacco products, including electronic smoking devices, uh, in Levy Watson Park in the city of Art, Kansas City, Kansas.
Second.
The move and second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Ganger?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Yes. Environmental Services Department.
Item number one is a resolution authorizing the city of Art City to enter a contract with professional engineering consultants, P E C of Wichita, Kansas, to provide project specifications including permitting, design, bidding assistance, and construction administration, golf tower rehabilitation in an amount not to exceed ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Madam Mayor, City Commissioners, uh, golf tower is the one up north by Creekstone, elevated tower. It's due to be, be have basically, the inside needs to be, uh, completely rebuilt, re-coated. And how kept up with this is actually have divers in there every three to five years inspecting, inspecting all the times. So kept track of deterioration on the inside. The outside, uh, they just need kind of cleaned up and re-coated, or they need to be tested for that. The main reason will actually come through the test on the outside. Side one has to be done. And then, uh, you notice it's very little civil engineering to this project, but the actual coating and actual, uh, even the bracing used to remove that estimates fixed to, you know, the oil and the ventilation, as it is, or drinking water. And that's where some of the cost comes. Notice, uh, K L M actually is an expert in that, and will be working with P E C. Now, that's all done. We see what we need to do, then, then we'll be in a contract to actually, that is a court. Then, uh, another thing that is, is in the past, uh, can add, done both of, have kind of had an interest in having their logo put on the thing, in which, like, negotiate where they pay for the cost of it. In London.
Is that something you'll bring up later or is it already locked in?
It's not locked in yet. Once we, once you okay this, then we'll get started with that. And, uh, we'll get a hold of Camp, Creekstone.
And they're going to help pay. Is that what the logo on there is for?
Well, they pay for their own logo.
For the logo, yeah.
That's it. I'll thank the paper.
Okay.
So, uh, uh, I guess that tip, unless the governing body have any questions on that project?
How tall is the tower?
Hundred and forty-four foot.
I thought I had him. Oh, boy.
You know the bottom of the tower.
You know what? Yeah, I did. You got that too?
Yeah, it's a hundred and forty-four.
I thought I had him. Yeah, you asked for that one, you had.
You don't miss the people who gets first place in Kansas, woman.
I know. Can answer anything.
So at some point in time, perhaps not now, but at some point in time, we might consider in instances like that, even though it might be a negligible amount, uh, um, it's more common place for publicly used facilities. I'm thinking like football stadiums and things like that. When private sector wants to put a logo there, that they usually, uh, will offer some remuneration for it, you know, a fee, because it's, it's good marketing for, for the business, you know? And I, I don't see us getting into a bidding war with other businesses, but someone may say, hey, we'd like to have our name on the water tower and maybe they bid more to do it. But, you know, just to, you know, something plus, but I do, on a, on a more sober thought, if their, if their markings on the tower begin to look unsightly, are they, what's the trigger for saying, do we just trust that they will go out and refresh it and fix it up or, 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 or does it just kind of become this faded?
It, same painter began it, so it should last as long as the coating does anyway. This original coating, the tower was put up in nineteen ninety-five, so this original coating is dead. But even on the outside, you notice that, you know, stuff grows, dirt hits it in the wind, you get stuff growing on it. Well, the new coating will actually try to repel that for quite a few years.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, maybe I slipped through that. I didn't realize that, that basically they're just going to pay the bill, but the same, same business that will do our portion of the painting will do theirs.
Correct.
They're just going to pick up the tab for that.
Yeah, they have, the work was our, whoever gets the contract with the tower, they'll have to negotiate the cost with them, pay that one. In other words, the city isn't going to pay anything.
Okay, thank you.
My problem is if we open it up for just these two businesses and there happens to be a third and a fourth one said, well, I never got a chance at that, are we going to be in trouble?
I don't know. And personally, I don't care if their logo gets on there or not, but I do need, since they have shown interest in the past, I do need to bring it up.
But you got to remember, those are the two biggest water customers we have, so.
That's correct.
Would we, would we, what do we need to do?
Well, you know, I, you'd probably have to, uh, succumb to that, but would they want to pay for it, is the question, because it's not going to be cheap to have your logo up there.
Yeah, because apparently it's in the air.
Yeah, they pay it, you know, but yeah, you would have to treat others equally to give them the same opportunity, but.
That's not part of this voting tonight, though, so, yeah, so. Correct. That, I'm sorry, I should have let us address the, uh, motion. So with that.
We would vote on that part of it. That's just something you're telling us you were going to reach out, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want you to know that.
Well, that'll be a later date, but I'll be on that part of it.
Yeah.
Now, it's just the taking of the water tower for the many four thousand.
With that being said, I'd like to adopt the, yep.
This is for the engineering.
Yeah, that is, okay, okay. Dine and beds and all that.
Well, still come back for bids.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I just went back to your.
Yeah. The governing body will disregard my comments regarding naming.
I've got confused in this conversation.
That's.
Now, I, I would adopt the resolution authorizing the city of Art, Kansas City to enter into a contract with professional engineering consultants of Wichita, Kansas, to provide project specifications, including permitting, design, bidding assistance, and construction administration for golf tower rehabilitation for an amount not to exceed ninety-four thousand five hundred.
Second.
The move and second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carry.
Good job. I'm going to come up with a question. I'm going to come up with a question. That's just going to stump you.
Okay, item number two, which is, I don't, um, is a resolution prohibiting the proposal by RE Petrol Company of Mission, Kansas, to upgrade the chestnut booster station, S C A D A remote telemetry unit for reliability of the booster station operation for an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
K L M is the chestnut booster that pressurizes the water east of the Walnut River. Has the original boost gate, it's actually been obsolete since two thousand and five. So, but we've kept, uh, kept it up spare parts as we've upgraded. The whole idea was to upgrade skate as slow as stuff went out, up there to do stuff. RE Petroleum Company had a license for the P L C that we put in at the water plant, even before we moved it to the new water plant, that can read old and new stuff because it's different. And, uh, so by doing that, we've been able to kind of do skater upgrades on it at times that they, which would be, you know, really expensive. But, uh, since it is, uh, you know, we had some trouble, had some low water pressure out there just recently. And luckily Wichita was redoing the skater on their stormwater at a board that worked on ours. So we were able to.
This old one you're getting at.
So we were able to, to get it back to working and keep it to water pressure.
Will that, will that increase the water pressure, you know, with this new thing coming on or not? Just do board?
Just more reliable.
It'll do fine.
Okay.
What I'm looking at here is reliability.
Yeah.
And it's a P L C, so my intent is, as we do more improvements east of the river, that it'll just be reprogrammed to run the station according to how it needs to run.
So were to put a tower out there one day, you could still use that?
Yeah.
List in there to do it, so.
Yeah, because we'll be redoing the existing station. Uh, I'll be coming with you, to you with some more of that. We've already, I guess I could go ahead and tell.
Yeah, I didn't have my notes, so go ahead and fill them in.
We've already, uh, got our aiming to have for S R F loan for that.
For that little water tower?
Yeah, for the water tower. And, uh, well, all the improvements, water tower, the improvements at the station, red the hydromantic tank, B F Ds, reden the pumps, uh, and we'll be, uh, be rehabilitating that groundwater storage tank there and furnish water in this region.
Well, that's wonderful news.
Yeah. And plus, we're going to do two under the river directional drills, and we'll have a loop coming clear from, uh, Madison clear back around, besides the one going, you know, straight out from Chestnut.
Now, if we get some, we get a tower out there, I think you'll see a lot more housing developed in that, that area, because I think right now it's, we still have that water pressure, you know, I mean, if we ever had a fire out there, we're doomed, you know, without bringing those tankers in, you know, the fight's big.
I agree with you. We've been really lucky all these years.
Yeah.
So one other question, on that thirty-two thousand, when they, when they put that in, are we, are we be down a day on water? I mean, how long would it take to put that thing?
Uh, it shouldn't take too long, uh, but whenever we have to have the station now, we'll be on low water pressure.
Yeah.
We do have the ability to, to, uh, put that zone on the high surface, but it's a lot of lowers, as Scott very well knows. We'll have better reliability.
And you said lower pressure, not no pressure?
Yeah, don't lower pressure.
Okay, for a time, okay.
That being said, I make the motion approving the proposals submitted by RE, uh, Petrol Company of Mission, Kansas, to upgrade the chestnut booster station and a remote, uh, telemetry unit for reliability of the booster station operation for the amount, not to see thirty-two thousand four twenty-nine.
Second.
The move and second, is there any further discussion? See to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Is there any items that the city commissioners would like to discuss at this time? Seeing none? Comments from the audience? Do you have anyone? Okay, Mr. City Manager.
Um, today, this morning, I got to meet with the new district representative for Senator Moran's office, so, um, he was a nice, nice man and, um, just kind of a good visit, so it was kind of good to, to build that, sort of build that relationship with, uh, with him. We are going to look at a technical assistance program called Risk Map, and it's for stormwater. And, uh, one of the areas that that we'll be looking at, uh, doing this tech study would be the C Street Canal, um, primarily over on the east side of town. Uh, the, um, proposed new floodplain maps would expand the floodplain over there on the east, around the east side of the, uh, C Street Canal quite a bit. So the idea with this, it's a grant, but, um, I shouldn't mention that, would be to study that area and see what, what could be done to reduce the risk of flooding in there and hopefully get the floodplain maps back down to where they are now or, or smaller. So that's what we'll be working on here with Josh and Mike. The real, no, excuse me, the rent, it's not real housing anymore, it's rehabilitation housing center district, um, application that we put in for, um, the, the law there in Sleuth was approved. And, uh, we also met with Alfredo, um, a week ago Monday and, uh, with Josh and, uh, got the, the process of rezoning and the Brownfields, uh, studies and stuff like that going, so, um, things are moving along with the housing project there. I did have a conversation with Sam Oglesby with the pickleball group, and, um, he is , uh, after, you know, the friends of Wilson Park Funds over to the pickleball funds, something I'll bring to you guys at the next meeting. I did work, talked to, um, Legacy Foundation and they're okay with it, but they do need to make sure that none of the funds were, were given for a specific project or, you know, so if, if they were, then those dollars would have to stay there, but, um, once we hear more back from that, I'll, uh, probably have that on the next agenda as you consider. I've met with the alcohol board, um, Friday morning and, uh, kind of went over everything that, uh, they always do and things that are need to be done for that, and I think everybody's on, on, on the same page there to go well. With our C B D G housing, um, grant that we have right now, uh, we had a inspection of our files, uh, last week. Everything went well, we had everything we needed and, uh, we do need to, uh, wind that grant up here in the near future. And they're going to allow us to expand our target area, um, a block or two out from each side, um, to try to drum up some more residents for, for those housing grants. So, um, um, staff will be reaching out to those areas and advertising and trying to drum up some interest so we can get the rest of those, those dollars. We'll also be applying for a second grant, uh, for the housing, uh, for a different target area, so, um, that kind of conjunction will finish in this one up. Last week, uh, a group met, uh, there's another housing or another childcare impact, uh, center grant, um, available. And so the group that worked on the last grant, um, uh, is, is back together trying to apply for some money again for a childcare center, um, for the community, so I'll keep you posted on that as it goes along. Creeks, or no, Campack, excuse me, they, uh, bought some additional property, um, on South Summit and tore down a, a building and then expanded their parking lot, and then they, uh, reached out about, um, possibly having some different traffic crossings for their employees. So we reached out to, to K dot and they did a traffic impact study and come back with some recommendations. So I did forward that to Campack and, uh, let them review it, and then we'll get together and talk about what, uh, we can do to, to address the safety issues there for their employees crossing.
So we can't do anything because it's K dot?
Yeah, it's.
Okay, yeah.
We can only do what they allow to happen.
Yeah.
Um, if, if the weather's nice and, um, and you're all willing, uh, we'll plan a, uh, tour of the wastewater treatment plant on the twenty-ninth work session. Um, it should be, uh, pretty well wound up and cleaned up and ready for, for you guys to go out and take a look and see what, uh, what all was improved and, and what all happened there. And then again, I'll remind everybody of the League of Municipalities Conference on the seventh, eighth and ninth. And, uh, those of you that, um, are planning to attend, uh, you do have rooms and the conference registrations are, are done. So, um, you should have got an email to your personal email account on the registration. So you didn't. Check on that. I know, I know the, the name, your name was on it. So you are registered, but, so, um, and then there's going to be on the October twenty-fifth, the League of Municipalities is going to have a regional dinner like they always do in the area for like there's in, in local cities. So this one will be in Hutchinson on the twenty-fifth of October. It'll probably be in the evening. So I get more data, you tell us on that, I'll let you guys know. And interested in going to that. So that's.
It's heart of the league, isn't it?
It's night parade.
Yeah.
I think if I grab it right.
And then also I'll remind you the financial, uh, summer back to the packet there. So I want to make sure you see that. And everything, everything looks fine. There's no, nothing that I'd be concerned about. So.
Okay. Executive session. At this time, I move the recess into an executive session to discuss the city manager's contract pursuant to K S A seven five four three one nine B one, personnel matters, um, non-elected personnel to, give me thirty minutes. And those in attendance will be, uh, city attorney Larry and commissioners.
And the city manager. I'll second that. Manager?
Go. We're discussing the contract. Not that. I can give you a later second session.
I'll second that.
They did second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah. I'll leave my stuff.
I move to extend the executive session for ten minutes.
I'll second that.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This conference will now be recorded.
I move we extend the executive session another ten minutes.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll get to basket.
This conference will now be recorded.
Make a motion if you want.
We have, we sent that. We have a big obligation to return back in if we want to discuss more, let's discuss more.
Okay.
Choose not to discuss, then that's the decision we made. I'd like to make a motion. We extend the exec for just five more minutes. I'm, I'm gonna, okay, I'll second it for the purpose of question. Can we accomplish what we need to do in five minutes? That's what I want to find out in five minutes. That's, I, I, that's the, that was my point.
You gotta go for longer.
But we are at. You know, I'll, I'll amend my motion to ten minutes.
Turning out.
So it is seven six, seven seventeen. Okay, seven twenty-seven?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
This conference will now be recorded.
The executive session is now closed. I'll entertain to adjourn. I move.
Second.
I move in a second, we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.